These days, gun-related accidents, murders, suicides, and massacres are on the rise. And grief and trauma these incidents leave behind are profound and devastating wounds.
The plan is to construct a six-story-high Peace Angel monument in downtown LA. A dozen other Peace Angels standing 11 feet tall will also be created.
Each of the smaller statues will be placed in various parts of the city. They will be culturally distinct, but all will represent peace.
There's 10 guns in this particular edifice. That means there are 10 lives that will not be lost by gun violence in our community.
And how can the Peace Angels Project influence thought?
So we would like everyone to see these statues wherever they're placed and to realize these are guns that are no longer going to be able to harm anyone because they were turned over to the Sheriff's Department.
Community members say this is art in action.
Along with Los Angeles, the Peace Angels Project is planning to build monuments in New York, Chicago, and the Silicon Valley. If you need help becoming a U.S. citizen, the Echo Park Library can be a great resource thanks to a new citizenship center.
Today, we're at the Echo Park Library, and we're here to open our seventh new American Center.
Our New Americans Initiative is designed to help immigrants take their first step on the path to citizenship with one-on-one assistance, flashcards to help with the citizenship test, information about English as a second language classes, all sorts of great resources.
There are about 700,000 people in the city of Los Angeles who are eligible to naturalize, and the library just needs people where they're at. There are also people who have questions about policy changes, their rights as residents, and the library can help with that.
Those aren't just hollow words. We are opening our doors of opportunity for our immigrant brothers and sisters in this city every single day. This is a difficult time. These are dark times, a moment when people seek to divide instead of unite, who seek to build up walls instead of bridges. We hear say, "Our work is to bring people together."
We welcome absolutely everyone in the community, and we serve all ages, and there is something at the LA Public Library for everyone.
We always have valued as an institution patron privacy and community trust. So this is just an extension of the good work that we've always been doing, and we've just expanded it to include other services for people.
And library cards are free, and these services are free. So come to your local library.
Need a job? The Lucas Museum is hiring for a variety of construction jobs and careers. Job seekers recently came out for a job fair hosted by the museum and Councilmember Karen Price.
Here at the Lucas Museum have insisted on local hire. We think if it's going to be built here, we should be hiring from here. And so this is just an opportunity to give you a step up. This is not going to be the only hiring opportunity, but it's one focused on you.
This is a local hire. It's number six of a series of local hire events that we've had since 2017. And what we're really looking is to get the community involved with different various trades on the project. And so anytime we can get anyone, whether it's electricians, laborers, carpenters, pipe fitters, iron workers onboard, we want to let them know what's here, and we're looking for local hires to be on the project.
It's important because it provides not just a job opportunity, but a career opportunity. We heard several stories today about individuals who started working on the Coliseum project and then went up to soccer stadium and into another project. In other words, these are career opportunities that we can change someone's life, and we want to encourage them to get started early.
Last I remember, I was last sitting in these seats, and now I'm speaking here at the program. I think it's a great opportunity that can open up for a lot of people.
I just want to say that we want to share that investments and opportunities include you.
For more info, visit lucasmuseumconstruction.org. A new program to help grow small businesses is launched. The city attorney reaches a settlement with a couple of vaping companies. And do you own any ivory? The LA Zoo wants you to turn it in as part of a national campaign. All this in CityBeat.
Los Angeles City Councilmen Marquise Harris Dawson and Paul Krokorian, County Supervisor Hilda Solis in the Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce, announced the One LA Regional Collaborative, a program to help build wealth for small businesses and provide easier access to contract opportunities through training, technology, and consulting.
If you're wanting to start a business, if you want to learn about that, you can come here to the Chamber for some information on that. And then One LA could be something that you look to move into. It's an opportunity to connect.
On the heels of recommending a citywide ban on the sale of flavored tobacco products, city attorney Mike Fier announced settlements with two vape companies over allegations they illegally marketed and sold to minors. In addition to $350,000 in penalties, each must now adhere to a myriad of strict regulations ensuring they do not advertise or sell to kids in California. The LA Zoo announced its participation in a national campaign to surrender ivory with the first Toss the Tusk event. The goal of this free public service event is to encourage the Los Angeles community to join in on the fight to save elephants from wildlife trafficking. Toss the Tusk gives the public a chance to safely dispose of their ivory items, ensuring it will never hold value in the black market. Officials say events like these can send a strong signal to the world that elephants are worth more alive.
We are dealing with an illegal wildlife crisis, and this is an opportunity for the community to be aware of how they can make a difference.
A new art exhibit is shedding a whole new light on how we learn about history. This artist brings to life what it was like for Jewish people in pre-Holocaust Europe. My taken viewers on a fascinating journey with a unique point of view.
So what you see behind me and all around is the work of an artist, David Lepkowsky, and his art documented life, specifically Jewish life.
His art depicts life before, during, and after the Holocaust, and his time as a prisoner in Siberia. David Lepkowsky is my great uncle. Him and his wife, Rifaq, were my only surviving, besides for my grandfather, the only surviving family members.
You know, the old thing, we're doomed to repeat the history if we don't remember it. And, you know, in the Holocaust, you know, 13 million lives, 6 million Jewish lives snuffed out for what? Because of hatred. And then we see the hatred in the world today that exists. It's not just history if we're not careful and we're not acting vigilantly and we don't embrace our diversity and embrace each other.
We feel that Holocaust education needs to be relevant to the audiences today, and so we created the virtual reality model that you can literally step into the artwork and become part of the scene.
Shalom, I am David Lepkowsky, the artist. I would like to welcome you to Vilna, the city of my youth. The year was 1929. I was just 23, and the world held so much promise.
Basically, we asked the question, what would it be like to step into the paintings? What did David Lepkowsky want the world to see and why? And in doing so, it is the beginning of thought. This is what can happen when one person, one group treats another group as other, as different.
This is my grandfather, great-grandfather, my great-grandmother, and they were physically forced out. From there, they were moved into a ghetto, and you just get this absolute feeling of sadness.
So when we had the first exhibits, parents said to us, "I never knew this. I never have learned this history."
The first school at which we piloted our program, we went in and not a single student had ever heard of the Holocaust. And after our semester, these students were educating their community, their peers, and their families about David Lepkowsky and the life and the time period in which he had lived.
Reseda came alive recently celebrating the valley's creative community and showing some real Reseda love. We head over to the Fourth Annual Reseda Rising.
This event is the Reseda Art Walk, and it is part of my Reseda Rising initiative. It's our fourth year doing it. And the beauty of this event, you come to this event and you can feel Reseda and you can feel the artistic community flowing through your veins. It's a magnet for that kind of energy.
I like it here. I like the live music. I like the food, and I like the atmosphere. It's great.
I think it's amazing just seeing all the different artists, being able to present their work and everything, being able to have spaces like this where you can create art yourself, just kind of experience the whole thing is really cool.
I don't do just shows in LA. I've traveled all over the country. And I chose Reseda Rising because this is the best place for me to connect with the people of the 818. You know, there's no better place to connect with people who are practically my neighbors.
You know, Reseda Rising is obviously very successful exactly for these reasons. It brings the communities together with art, with music.
This is the core of the valley here in Reseda. And for too long, it has been neglected, and I have vowed and I am committed to tapping into that special energy here and raising it up.
From traditional street tacos to fusion-inspired and vegan tacos, there was a taco for everyone at the Silmar Taco Festival, and folks came out in droves.
Well, it's a warm day, but we are cool out here in Silmar where we've got our First Annual Taco Fest. And, I mean, the crowd continues to come out. We've got something for everyone in the family to enjoy. But I'm really excited about the turnout today. At 12 o'clock when we opened, before we even actually formally opened, we had people lined up, ready to get in here. This is the first event of its kind here in the northeast San Fernando Valley, and I'm so proud that we're able to activate this space in a way that no one else has.
I think my communities are really good. I think we're just one of the communities here in San Fernando, Silmar, that really stands out above the rest. And I really, I really appreciate the councilwoman coming out and doing what she's doing, man. That's impressive.
So beautiful. I love looking at all the vendors, checking out all the food spots, especially here in Silmar. If we're able to come as a community and be able to eat together, listen to music together, it's such a beautiful thing. I love it. I love being here.
Well, I think there's no better way to celebrate the contributions of the Latino community than to do one of our most celebrated foods, and that's tacos. And to be able to activate here in our community a celebration of how rich and diverse our culture is is a really proud thing for me to be able to do as a councilwoman for this area. And I look forward to producing more events like this that bring our community and our families together.
Join the fun at an Alvera Street Muertos Art Walk, celebrate African-American art and culture, and manja manja. Get ready to eat and have some fun at the Italian Festival. All this and things to do.
Celebrating its sixth year, the Alvera Street Muertos Art Walk brings together artists from the greater Los Angeles community, selling original artwork, clothing, and more. The Muertos Art Walk is a hand-curated show designed to highlight the work of local and undiscovered artists. So shop small and shop local at the Alvera Street Muertos Art Walk, happening Saturday, October 5th, beginning at 10:00 a.m. For details, visit alveraevents.com. Join Africa in America for its sixth annual original works showcase entitled "The Sounds of Blackness." This year, the event will shine a light on the soundtrack of the African diaspora, featuring original works from musicians, vocalists, and drummers. Don't miss the original works showcase "The Sounds of Blackness," happening October 5th at the Barnstall Gallery Theater in East Hollywood. For ticket information, visit africainamericamag.com. October is Italian-American Heritage Month and a time to celebrate all things Italian. The Los Angeles Italian Festival is a day to taste, hear, and experience amazing Italian food, music, and culture right here in the City of Angels. Vermont and Franklin is the place, and October 6th is the day that everyone in Los Angeles is Italian. Join the festivities at the Los Angeles Italian Festival, October 6th, beginning at 10:00 a.m. For ticket info, visit their listing on Eventbrite. And that's a look at some things to do.
That's it for this edition. I'm Umeema Rashid. From all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more LA This Week.
Items one through eleven are items for which public hearings have been held. There is a request to hold item ten for an amending motion.
Okay, let's hold that one and let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, that brings us where?
And for the record, that is actually eleven ayes, we have included council member Carruthers.
Wonderful, so again, that brings us where?
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations, items called special or general public comment.
Okay, I'm gonna try to go through some of the general public comment, if I can get Sean Murphy, is there Josh Candido? And Corey Smith, please come forward, if I called you, please come forward.
What items?
No, you only have public comment.
Damn kiosk. Fix the streets of the, Sean Murphy, first of all, CD three, fix the streets in Canoga Park, they're cracking every day, one is bad on Roscoe and DeSoto, all the streets of DeSoto needs to be repaired, and every other street in the Canoga Park.
Okay, Mr. Smith.
How you doing there, baby? I'm here to talk about Apple today, wanna talk about selling about eighty-seven dollar computers for four thousand dollars on borrowed money, talk about keyboards that blow out within a few months of buying it, you know, drop the thing once and the entire thing is just toast, it's made out of metal, we all buy it 'cause it's metal for strength and durability, but that metal is about as thick as a gum wrapper. So I got my computer in the shop right now, for five, five-plus days for a two-hour fix, looked it up, it's about two hours, they said that they got started on it last night, 'cause I just showed up, coincidentally, they have to now run tests on it, holding on of my computer, so I just wanna say how much you wanna bet these bloodsuckers over here swooping my data, thank you.
Okay, Candido, I need Micah Roberts, Steve Coogee, Lynn Moses, please come forward. Yes, sir.
I am Micah Roberts, I'm here on behalf of the FIBA Center and Jabari, I wanna let you know that I've been going to the FIBA Center for twenty years, the gang culture in Los Angeles, we can easily learn how to murder somebody, Jabari has taught me and several young black men how to save lives, he's a firefighter, he shares those skills with us, we appreciate it, he opened up the farmer's market, provided jobs for us, and we appreciate that, has given us an alternative, nineteen ninety-two, the FIBA Center was not standing, but we do know that there was, recalling my time, but we do know that there was a riot, and right now, we're dealing with gentrification, we're dealing with two cultures that are, well, a culture that's merging in on what is known as the black community, at that time, we also know that Reginald Denny took a hell of a beating because, and the community at that time thought it was justified because the system thought Rodney King's beating was justified, what we're saying is that we need examples like Jabari, so we can, recalling my time, so we can not have these type of instances.
Thank you, thank you, next speaker, please. Please come forward and identify yourself. Lynn Moses, Jabari, Carolyn Connor, Mike Hale, Rob Quan, yes.
The screen, it's got blue on it, Mike Greenspan, Five-it-own Florida Gator, UCLA, I don't, Friday was always a day that I dreaded going to school as a kid, why? Because they would serve fish in the lunchroom at a public school, and I asked, well, how come you're serving fish? And I remember this classmate said, because Catholics will go to hell if they eat meat on Friday, well, that's, what's that Hollywood movie title, To Hell and Back, I went to the lunchroom, and then I got to leave afterward, I personally went through a hell and back, I mean, this stinky yellow fish, just made me sick to my stomach, and now, in the Jewish delicatessen, we have clam chowder on Fridays, and a Jewish delicatessen, I got an idea, if you're gonna serve clam chowder on a Friday, why don't you at least serve it with a side of Queer Robicon, your boons suck.
Okay, if I've called your name, please come to the podium, please, Mr. Previn, Wayne Williams, Carolyn Goodman, if I called you, just get in line, and we wanna make sure we get everybody today, yes, sir.
Good morning, I'm here to honorably represent my people.
And your name, sir?
My name is Lynn Moses, because the black community in Los Angeles has no representation, you, Mr. Wesson, Mr. Dawson, do not represent us, you're in blackface, white people think a white person wearing blackface is blackface, but you represent blackface, Dawson represents blackface, the only community center, one of the only community centers in Los Angeles, the FIBA Center, Dawson and you, Wesson, want to destroy it, are attacking it via the Destination Crenshaw gentrification project, there will be no white vendors accepted, taking the place of destroying these black vendors, which you're doing currently, it will not be accepted.
Thank you, Mr. Moses, next speaker, please, identify yourself.
Rob Quan, last summer, I said the Rules Committee was where reform went to die, I actually felt kinda bad about that later on, considering this council really did step up and give us a public financing system we could be proud of, unfortunately, instead of the Rules Committee or this full council killing reform, it was choked out behind closed doors, I know you feel like we're asking for a lot, but we're not, last night, I was looking at the council files from nineteen eighty-nine, nineteen ninety, when we had a huge corruption scandal in the city of LA, they stepped up, your predecessors would be disappointed in you, they carried out investigations, they actually had about four dozen ethics reforms motions in there, they had lively debates, they actually cared, they built upon reforms, they closed loopholes, and did something, and there shouldn't be any doubt why the FIBA Center is on the chopping block, this is a city for the moneyed, not the many, it's where you believe corporations are people.
Thank you, Rob, thank you, okay, next speaker, please identify yourself.
Wayne Williams with the California Clean Money Campaign, and I'm here to ask you to take that next step, on top of what you've already done to make elections better in this city for the people, and that is to implement a non-individual ban, that's very important, because we can't see who these LLCs are, even the media cannot figure out who these LLCs are, who are bundling money together to put them into campaigns, and it's very important for the public to know who it is that's supporting you, so I implore you to bring this back and do the right thing, take the next step, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir, next, identify yourself, please.
Michael Hale.
Yes, sir.
Marine Corps vet, forty years in aerospace, here representing the FIBA Center, I'd like to let you know, we like to save the FIBA Center, I have ideas of my own, I'm like legal Brian, and I get a lot of support from the VA as far as training and blinding, and I would like to bring that to the FIBA Center and train some of the people that can't afford the support that I get, and they don't seem to know the value that the FIBA Center is giving the community, but, you know, I don't understand, you know, it seemed like, you know, we come down here to try to help you, but it seemed like you need a lot of help here, you know, and if you want some help, come to the FIBA Center and we'll give it to you.
Thank you, sir, next speaker, identify yourself.
Good morning, I'm Carolina Goodman, in council member Ruse's district, representing the League of Women Voters of Los Angeles, last May, we were excited about the bold campaign finance reforms that were sent over to the city attorney, four months later, we learned that the ban on non-individual contributions had been ignored, I'm here to officially register our enormous disappointment, decisions were made behind closed doors to withdraw support for the ban on non-individual contributions, how can voters trust City Hall when our elected officials act in ways that undermine that trust, Angelinos showed their overwhelming support in two thousand thirteen, with seventy-seven percent voting for a resolution against Citizens United, New York City and San Francisco have limited bans on corporate and LLC contributions, while preserving the ability for unions and PACs to make contributions, Los Angeles can and should implement a similar program, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, identify yourself.
My name is Carolyn Connor, I, I'm straight out of Compton, graduated from Centennial High School in the mid-sixties, I was a LA County probation department officer for thirty-four years, and though I'm straight out of Compton and reside in the county of Los Angeles, there's very few community centers like the FIBA Center, I actually come to the FIBA Center several times a week, at least two times a week, for some of the programming that they have, they have a fine young man who runs the FIBA Center, and there's no reason to make any changes, I'm a little dismayed at the LA City Council, that this has gone on, the congressperson, councilperson never appears to be here, and when he was on the radio, he said some things that were deliberate lies and can be proven were lies in court, so I'm here to support Jabari and the whole community, and you may win a battle, but you might lose the war in the long time, in the big run, thank you.
Thank you, next speaker, please identify yourself.
Jabari Jumani, I'm here representing the FIBA Center, as many people are here, I'm a firefighter, the city of Los Angeles have been so for thirty-three years, I am a stakeholder in the community, we open the FIBA Center to render service to the underserved area of Los Angeles, the African-American community, we've spoken out against gentrification, we've spoken out against displacement of African-Americans, and because some of that points to the benign neglect of our councilperson, Marquise Harris Dawson, he saw a fit to serve us with an eviction notice, one which we are in the process of fighting right now, many times, I come before you all, and I've said that I will join with anyone in an effort to reach an agreement before it gets, this gets bigger than it needs to, it has already gotten bigger than it needs to, and it'll get bigger than this, but yesterday, I entered into what councilmen set up as a negotiation to stay in the center, it was contrived, full of lies, and it wasn't sincere, I'm still looking forward to getting that day to reconcile.
Thank you, sir, next speaker.
It's Eric Previn from Studio City, and it's only one minute, because you've put items that are not open to the public to speak, which is appalling, because this was meant to be the valley, come down, talk about valley issues, you've made that impossible, Corian signed off only after they took comment, and I couldn't even get my comment in, about a liquor license, where they've had thirteen or fourteen DWIs out in the valley, and by the way, councilmember Martinez, you know, all of the CD two permanent supporting are right up on the border of your district, off to the west, so I mean, what we have here is a guy who doesn't seem to care, and when I reached out to Caro and said, can we talk about it, can I, have you checked with LA Family Housing that's one mile away, or the church that's a tenth of a mile away, they didn't respond at all, and, you know, this is the kind of thing that hurts communities, and he's busy raising money, they're all raising money, there's John Lee, looking at his phone now, how much did he raise today, and you're gonna stick it through the six-to-one match, and it's appalling, sir, and you, you, sir, are the leader, you, enough is enough, I hope you don't get elected at county supervisor, you should enjoy your retirement, you've done a good job of protecting all the insiders and denying the public what they need.
Thank you, sir, thank you, next, Candido.
Thank you, Mr. President, proud, proud resident of the twelfth district, which is now represented by Mr. John Lee, I just wish these gentlemen knew who John Lee really is, I wanna thank the council for honoring Holmes Middle School last, excuse me, in August, August ninth, down in City Hall, my granddaughter, Paywall, was the one that represented and spoke for the kids, Greg Smith is the one that introduced him, but it was Mr. John Lee who's worked with him, long before he became a councilman, he was over at the food bank in barrels, separating food so we could get it out to the pantries, he was the one that went over, Mr. John Lee was the one that went over to their school and sat with them after school, so that they could work on projects, so that they could get out these things to the homeless in their communities, Mr. Lee, I wanna thank you, I've known you for many, many years, and I just hope these gentlemen will get to know you the way I do, that you care about this community, you care about the city, and it's been an honor to work with you, and hopefully, we can continue to work to better the city of Los Angeles, by getting rid of those ten-by-ten.
Thank, thank you, sir, so do we have Steve and Josh, Mr. Herman? Again, Steve and Josh, last call, yes, sir.
Case number one-nine S T R O zero-zero-six-eight-five-three, Hugo Rossiter, you filed for seven-point-nine million dollars to what, allow a million dollars of legal defense funds for access of legal services? Allow a million dollars of legal defense funds for access of legal service? That's really fucking offensive. When fucking Americans fought for this country to bring this country to where it is, and you motherfuckers are supporting illegal immigrant fucking wetbacks in this country? All these fucking wetbacks? If they only knew if I could, I would put that rifle on my back and wave my flag in the air and fight for every fucking inch for America. God bless Donald Trump. Los Angeles retaliation, speaking out against cunts and bitches and whores who abuse us like you've done with Abiba, you fucking retaliatory motherfuckers. Fuck you. Forty-two U.S.C., 1983.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Spindler.
Yeah, so, I went and I went to my private negotiation with Marquise Harris Dawson and Mr. Price and Mr. Mark Ridley-Monkey. And they said, "I'll let you keep selling dope in Nury's district if you stop talking about shit like the Afibah Center. If you stop talking about shit like Kern Price and his bigamy and that goddamn fucking Price Waterhouse Cooper's lawsuit that Nury conspired with Paul Krikory and defiled with our criminal goddamn act of fear." So I'm making an account of offer. I want all the hoes and all the drug dealers to be under my leadership and jurisdiction. I want seventy percent. Nury gets twenty percent, and then Herb gets the other ten.
Thank you. Your time's expired. Your time's expired. That, Mr. Spindler, now you're disrupting. Your time is over. Okay, that concludes our public comment. At this point, who's first? Is it Ms. Rodriguez for presentation? Okay, Mr. Spindler and Mr. Herman, it's now time for you to be quiet. This is not your time. This is Ms. Rodriguez's time.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. I have a very, very special presentation today. And while we are just a little over a month away from Veterans Day, you know, Mr. President, you especially always remark about how every day is a special day when we have an opportunity to breathe life. But I think to that moment and that statement, I would be remiss if I didn't take an opportunity and not wait till Veterans Day to honor some of the individuals, many of whom from Pacoima, that served during one of the most courageous and historic times in our country's history. And those are the veterans that served in World War II. And would you please help me give them a great round of applause? I am joined today by Bill Olson, Rudy Calderon, and Henry Polite. And these gentlemen serve so courageously and historically that I, again, I, as we prepare, and I know a number of us are involved in preparing for celebrations honoring our veterans shortly coming up, again, I wanted to take an opportunity to honor these individuals and share a little bit of their story. You know, as the daughter of a Marine Corps veteran that served in Vietnam, I don't think we take the opportunity to say thank you enough. And so I know many of us, when we do come upon individuals that are wearing very proudly their hats and their shirts that indicate their service, many of us take that opportunity to say thank you. But I think there's no greater opportunity that we have, sitting around this horseshoe, than to honor and commemorate the service of individuals that, through their life's history, they have seen so much. But in certain circumstances, I've actually come to become good friends with some of our veterans that are up here. But I want to start sharing their stories with all of you. Bill Olson, who is a hundred years old, served as a sergeant in the Hundred and Eightieth Engineering Group under General Patton's Third Army. He was sent to Normandy on D-Day and was also part of a team that rescued prisoners from the Buchenwald concentration camp in Germany. And we thank you for joining us here today, Bill. Thank you so much, and thank you for your service. So Rudy, I have to share a special story about, because I first got to know, I've known Rudy for the last several years and his beautiful wife Christina. They're very active. In fact, I first met them at the Broadus Senior Center, where they spend most, almost every single day there in being in service to the balance of the community. And I've also run into them several times at the 10:00 a.m. Mass at Mary Immaculate. But Rudy, who is a hundred and three years old, also served in the Army. He was drafted into the Army and was on a ship about to be deployed when World War II ended. His three brothers who also served in World War II, and Rudy is a volunteer again at the Broadus Center and has been helping and lead the meal program there for the past thirty years. Thank you, Rudy, for your continued service. I also want to mention Rudy still drives, folks. Rudy still, you know, Rudy still drives. That's a big deal. I'm always so impressed by that. And, no, and they're just, you know, I love you guys very much. It's always such a wonderful treat to see you guys at the Senior Center when I'm there on occasion to visit. So thank you for being here and honoring us with your presence. And finally, Henry Polite, who is ninety-three, was a Tuskegee Airman during World War II. As a math major at Howard University, Henry was recruited to join the Air Force. And after returning from the war, he worked as an engineer where he invented the first hard-disk drive with binary-coded math. Yes. This technology is used in the modern-day computer and aircraft equipment. And again, this is just, these individuals are emblematic of the caliber of character of individuals that I'm so proud to represent out of the community of Pacoima. But more importantly, the caliber of Americans, reflective of the diversity, but more important, their commitment to service and making sure that we hold true the values that we hold dear in this country. And, you know, when I think about how the course of history was turned and changed because of your service, there's not a single day that goes by that I don't appreciate you and that each of us, each one of us around this horseshoe thanks you and salutes you. So God bless you all. Thank you so much for your service. We are incredibly indebted to you for your incredible public service to our country and to our community. Thank you all so much. Does anyone want to speak?
Gentlemen, does anybody want to address the city council?
Would you like to? Okay. We don't want to pass this moment by.
You know, can I recognize Mr.? Okay, go ahead.
Well, I'm the son of Henry Polite, and we've been in Los Angeles since 1957, and no one can appreciate this town more than I have and my family has. My brothers and sisters with the USC North Ridge like me. And I've, Councilman Price, he's worked trying to get my Los Angeles Grand Prix auto race in Los Angeles. He's helped. And the mayor, Val Leva, he was wonderful. He helped me a lot. I mean, and Mr. Wesson, he gave my father an award in the past.
Yes.
For being a Tuskegee Airman.
Yes, I did.
So this town has fulfilled dreams of people coming here from Philadelphia, Tennessee, Alabama. I saw them all. They came to Pacoima, and I watched them grow their families and grow their hearts and souls and stay here. And we owe it all to the city council. You guys are fantastic Democrats. We, you don't know how much we appreciate. Most of L.A. can't get in here, but we go to work every day, and we turn around, and I'm with people. I used to be a union organizer. I seen poor people, and they always say good things about this town. They would leave if they didn't, and they appreciate you guys, because you're always trying. That's the gusto of this town. You're always trying. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Bless you.
So colleagues, Mr. President, were we, did you have, or Mr. Krikorian?
Mr. Krikorian?
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you very much, Ms. Rodriguez, for giving us this special treat today, something that we should be doing regularly, honestly, because it's an opportunity for us to say thank you to these gentlemen who have served our country so heroically. But it's also a chance for us all to reflect, I think, on the values that this generation represented and how much it's incumbent upon us, I think, to take that baton from them and carry it forward. In August, my dad would have turned ninety-five, and he served in the Marine Corps in the Sixth Marine Division in the Pacific during World War II. And I wish he were here so that I could thank him along with all you gentlemen. But you stand for a generation that not only fought around the world heroically for this country, but you also, you and your generation, also fought here, fought through the Great Depression, built the city that we know and enjoy here today. And in, throughout all of that, throughout all of the hardship of the middle of the twentieth century, you always reflected a love of country, a commitment to the constitutional principles that this country stands for, a sense of doing productive things for the collective country and not just each of us individually serving our selfish individual needs. And now more than ever, I think, you know, all of us need to reflect back on the country that you built, the country that you represent, and see what we can all do to recommit ourselves to try to rebuild some of the values that you all represent. So thank you very much for your service, of course, but thank you very much for your lifetime of example for the rest of us as well.
Mr. Lee?
Thank you, Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez, for having us here today. You know, me and my colleague, Councilmember Blumenfield, work very closely with a group called Wings Over Wendy's, the World War II veterans, Vietnam veterans, Korean War veterans, where they gather every Monday at a Wendy's. And we go there to celebrate them because we appreciate so much of what they do. My mom tells me that any opportunity I can to thank a veteran, I should take that opportunity because she says that if it wasn't for the men and women who fought in World War II, the men and women who fought in the Korean War, I would not be standing here today. And my own staff member, Josh Jaeger's grandfather, was liberated from Buchenwald. And so on behalf of us two and everyone in this room, we appreciate everything that you've done for this country.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Thank you, colleagues, for your kind words. And with that, on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, we have certificates here honoring and thanking you for your incredible service to our country. We are grateful to know you and grateful to still have you with us, to share your stories so that God bless us all. We never have to repeat that history again. Thank you so much.
Let's give one more round of applause. Mr. Spindler, if you do not sit down and quit disrupting this meeting, you will be removed. And Mr. Blumenfield, as they depart to the back, then the floor will be, the floor will be...
Mr. Blumenfield, are you ready, sir?
Yes, thank you. And I have some special guests with me, but they're not going to come to the microphone because the dogs need a little space between them, but I'll bring them up one by one as we need it. So colleagues, as you all know, this, we have just concluded National Service Dog Month in September. And National Service Dog Month was created by Dick Van Patten. He not only thought that eight was enough, but he thought that we needed to honor our service animals. So today, we are here to commemorate three remarkably and highly transformative assistant dog providers. As many of you are aware, assistance dogs fundamentally transform the lives of many folks in our community. They literally enable people to live their lives with freedom. The partnership between a person and their dog empowers folks to live independently and fulfill their potential. And I am joined today by Jamie Pacheco Orozco, who is with the Department of Disability, Sally Wing from K-9 Support Teams, Christina Kim from K-9 Champions for Independence, and Lori Burnson from Guide Dogs of America. Sally's here. The others I mentioned are sitting over there. Now, I'd like to tell you a little bit about each guest before we hear briefly from them. First, Guide Dogs of America. Guide Dogs of America has matched guide dog partners with blind or visually impaired for over seventy years. They build bonds and support systems between clients and dog so that a partnership can last a lifetime. These life-changing partnerships have touched the lives of thousands across the country, all at no cost. Then we have K-9 Support Teams. K-9 Support Teams was founded back in 1989 with the goal of increasing mobility and empowering the independence of folks with disabilities. The goal has the effect of providing folks with companionship and with a loving support system. K-9 Support Teams helps place dogs in nursing homes and group care facilities to provide positive psychological impacts. They connect our brave veterans with assistance and service dogs through their remarkable paws for wounded veterans programs. And paw is, of course, spelled like a paw, animal paw. Then we have K-9 Companions for Independence. Since 1975, K-9 Companions for Independence has graduated over 6,000 teams, transforming the lives of folks with disabilities. Their highly trained and skilled assistance dogs can cover daily tasks, hearing assistance, enhance independence with those with physical, cognitives, and developmental disabilities, and support their client at their place of work. All of these animals are amazing, and the organizations that train these animals are equally amazing. They have transformed so many lives, and I wanted to give you a chance to hear from a few of the folks who are doing this work every day. So we'll start first with Sally, who is right over here to my left, your right. Sally Wing from K-9 Support Teams. Sally?
Councilwoman Blumenfield, councilmembers, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here to share the amazing work that these dogs do. We are privileged to work with them, bring out their best so that they can be of assistance to individuals like our founder, Carol Rokemore, who was stricken with polio at a young age
and has spent her life living with mobility challenges. It is a formidable task to be at the helm of a nonprofit organization for the most able-bodied person, and yet Carol Rokemore has done it for thirty years. She remains the spirit, the heart, and the wind in our sails that continue, that encourages us to keep going, and I can say without hesitation, these dogs not only provide independence, I have seen them save lives, and I didn't realize the power of a wagging tail until I witnessed this firsthand through my experience with Canine Support Teams. These are the elite of the canine community. After two years of preparation, they are the best of the best, sir, and they are wonderful companions. I cannot imagine the experience of someone when they finally have that level of independence brought to them by a bag of bones and fur that is a service dog, so highly trained, so committed, and so loving, and I thank you for recognizing the work that they do and the honor that we have in working with them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sally. Next, we'll have a few words from Lori Burnson, who is with Guide Dogs of America. Lori?
Good morning, councilmembers, and I just want to thank you so much for inviting Yvette and I from Guide Dogs of America, and I can personally attest to how a guide dog serves dogs, uh, you know, all the work that they do, but at Guide Dogs of America, we provide guide dogs for people like me who are visually impaired at no charge, so it's all done through donations, and we need help in the community, just to get the word out, uh, most of our graduates are actually from the Los Angeles area. I'm a born and raised Valley girl myself, and I had my life changed when my vision, I lost my vision at thirty-three, and since then, I've had four guide dogs that have made me more independent than I was when I could see, if that makes sense, but it's true. And we're located right in Silmar, and a lot of people don't even know what, that we're there, and we've been, the school's been in service for almost about seventy-five years, and I'd like to invite all of you, if you ever would like to come for a tour, we are available to do that for you, and we do seek the, the support from the community, so that we can give to more of those people like me to just embrace the idea that they can be independents, and you really can have a full life, so I thank you again.
Uh, now we'll hear briefly from Christina Kim with Canine Champions for Independence. Christina? And I think we have a handheld mic for you, is that... She's got the mic, okay.
Good morning, this is Christina Kim, a professor at Cal State, uh, representing Canine Companion for Independence. Um, I just wanted to demonstrate quickly how, if she is... Would you put your, uh, hands under the, your buttocks? Or if you're standing, uh, pocket, so now you're paralyzed, you cannot do anything. She's a very young dog, I still, she's a puppy. Here, look, sit, heal, okay. So you're still paralyzed, so you cannot do anything, okay? Okay, so imagine that you have dropped your key, whoops, I want you to think about how you can get that one. Thank you. Thank you. While you are, while you are trying to figure out how to get it, still thinking, right? I, I get, I become independent, I can say goodbye, and then I'm leaving. Good luck with you.
Thank you very much. And our, our last speaker will be, uh, Jamie Pacheco Orozco, he's from our own Department of Disability, uh, and he, uh, too knows the importance of service animals. Jamie?
Good morning, thank you, Councilmember Blumenfield and, and council, for recognizing the work that these organizations do in serving our people with disabilities, our communities. It's also important to recognize that they serve not only individuals, but they serve the families of these individuals as well. Whether it's an individual who has, uh, diabetes, or a person who has, um, mobility issues, or is low-vision or impaired, or a person like me who has epilepsy, the ability to have a service animal provide you a measure of comfort, security, and independence. It allows you to work, it allows you to function within the community, it allows you to be a part of a larger society. I want to thank these organizations for the work that they do on behalf of the Department of Disability. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm glad we're able to learn a little bit about and, and, and make public some of the amazing work that they do and that these service animals do each and every day. Uh, these organizations really are transformative. I have certificates from the city for each of you, I think we're going to go to the back and, uh, we'll, we'll give those...
Mr. Blumenfield, I'm sorry to interrupt you, so we have one member on the queue that'd like to speak.
Wonderful.
Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam President, and I want to thank you, Bob, for, uh, honoring, um, all of these wonderful service providers and bringing to attention Service Dog Month. Uh, you know, since ancient cultures existed, uh, humans have had this camaraderie, this spiritual connection with canines, and then through the centuries, through thousands of years of domestication, um, all of these, you know, our, our dogs, they always are, it's kind of in their DNA, they want a job to do. Uh, anyone who has a dog knows that they're always wanting to do something for their human companion, uh, and I think the service dogs exemplify that because of their training, and, uh, I, I think the dogs occupy a very, very special place in modern society. They are family members, they have rights, they, uh, are spiritual beings with feelings, and we are spiritually connected to them, uh, and so I just think that, you heard some of the testimony from, uh, those who are working with service dogs, and what they've done and what they continue to do for people, uh, I think it's part of our journey as human beings to march forward, uh, with our canine community, so I just want to acknowledge the wonderful work, uh, and the selflessness of everyone who works with service animals to make life better for, uh, one another, uh, and there's just something really particularly beautiful about that, and I think it's wonderful that you brought them in here today, uh, to elevate, um, the purpose that they all serve, so, so thank you and congratulations to everyone on Service Dog Month.
Thank you.
Back to you, Mr. Blumenfield, back to you.
Great, so we, I've got some wonderful certificates for each of you, and I, given the, the dogs and the complications, we're going to take the pictures in the back and figure all that out, so let's give it up for, for the service dogs and the organizations, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Members, let's move on to item number ten, there's been a amended motion that should have been circulated, is that correct, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, the amended motion has been posted and circulated for counsel.
Okay, we have a number of speakers on the queue, um, let's go to the speakers first, Mr. Herman, are you still here? Mr. Herman, followed by Sean Murphy and Josh Poino, Corey Smith and Lynn Moses, you're speaking on item number ten. Start his clock, please.
I'm acknowledging the service dogs, mommy. So you see, on item number ten, nineteen dash zero three zero seven, regarding the energy climate change, there's no fucking such thing as a climate change, because the world is going to end the way you allow the homeless population in the city of San Francisco and California.
Please get on the agenda, item, Mr. Herman.
I'm on the Bureau of Street Services.
No, you're speaking on item number ten.
Yeah, item number ten with the BSS and the BOSS for bullshit, so with the assistance of the Bureau Engineering, current responsibilities with no fucking effort, no fucking enforcement, and no fucking trespassing laws, we all have to support John Walsh and Donald Trump's recommendations. The whole fucking country is going to hell, enforcement capabilities and the effort with the Pacoima Wash, fuck you!
Good day, Mr. Herman, next speaker, uh, Sean Murphy, you're speaking on item number ten, Sean.
Item ten, F it.
All right, Sean, um, next speaker is Josh Poino, are you here? Mr. Previn, sit down, I haven't called your name.
Oh, I thought you called me, no?
Nope. I've not called your name yet, Josh, are you here? Mr. Previn, please sit down, sit down, I've not called your name, you know how this works. Josh, are you here? Josh is not here, how about Corey Smith? Corey, come on up. Come on up, Corey, you're speaking on item number ten, please.
Item number ten. Item ten. Ah, okay, so since we were talking about splatters earlier, and, uh, this one is about the Pacoima Wash, uh, isn't that where they got that project that looks like a giant dildo? Um, think that's the mayor's project, something like that, um, I heard that area is kind of sketch, so I agree with this, that it should be, uh, uh, improved and some enforcement over there, but, um, I was, I was concerned because why is it just over the river, over the wash, rather than over the whole freeway, you know what I mean? I figure if we're spending all this money, we might as well make it super accessible rather than just to where all the people can stab you, you know, so, um, those are my thoughts on it.
Next speaker, Lynn Moses, are you still here? Do you want to speak on item number ten, sir? So before you speak, Mr. Moses, the system was down, so anyone else who wishes to speak on this item, please come forward after Mr. Lynn speaks, go ahead.
Do I have one minute or three?
You have one minute, item number ten.
Sure. Uh, regarding, uh, climate change, I think we all want to still be here in twenty, thirty, fifty years, but we're not going to be unless we start treating each other decently, humanly. It's real nice that you have the meeting out here, so that we don't have to step over people to get into the building.
Mr. Moses, I'm going to stop you, I'm sorry, you have to talk about item number ten, that's what you signed up to speak on.
That's what I'm talking about.
Item number ten has to do with the Pacoima Wash.
What goes on in my mind, it's all connected, you need to listen, okay? You listen to everybody except the people, I know there's a lot of name-calling and people...
Please connect up quickly, so that we can understand why this is...
You're interrupting me.
I'm sorry, connect up to the topic.
This, this is the topic, you're the topic, you're destroying the community.
Okay, you're, you're off-topic, I'm sorry.
The FIBA Center is our community, and you're destroying it also.
Thank you, Mr. Moses, thank you, um, next speaker, you're speaking on item number ten?
Correct.
What is your name?
I am Michael Roberts, in, in regards to, uh, climate change, we are a microcosm of the microcosm, all of us eat, you know, um, it's producing...
Okay, I, I'm sorry, can, can we just hold you some time for a second? Look, it, this is about the Pacoima Wash, so the connection to climate change is pretty tangential, please understand we have to keep you on topic.
Okay, yeah, but this is, this is topic again, and, and I'm going to have to reclaim my time, if I may.
We stopped your clock, go ahead.
It, it was, but it was stopped, you know, it was, you cut me off at fifty.
Sir, you need to continue to get on topic, please.
Okay, well, as I was saying, um, we are the micro, we are the microcosm of the microcosm, uh, we do have to take care of the planet, if you guys are going to put eight, towards eight thousand dollars towards, or eight hundred thousand dollars towards, um, a fence, then you can most definitely put, put that towards community needs, because, I mean, we are the organisms that are going to, uh, keep this, keep this planet going, keeping, keeping the trash, um, out of the streets, uh, coming up with ideas where we're keeping the plastics and, and different things, because everything on this planet has a, a job, we know that the bees are disappearing, so we most definitely have to maneuver in a way that is good for our system, our personal system, just like our own health and the planetary health, thank you very much.
Does anyone else want to speak on item number ten? Mr. Previn, you want to come on up, followed by Mr. Spindler?
Thank you, it's Eric Previn, um, this is about moving Measure M money, uh, today for the first time, the dollar eight hundred thousand amount has come up, which is why you're taking comments, even though you were hoping that those of us who knew what's going on would leave and you would just vote on it, that's why it was hanging out until the very end. What it is, is to transfer money for infrastructure into a kind of infrastructure, a fence, and, you know, I think fences make sense in certain spots, but when you have a large kind of rural area where people hang out and try to stay alive, because if they come in the neighborhoods, they get tasered by Mr. Krikorian and Mr. Lee, I, I don't think we're really in a good area, I feel this is very apartheid, this is literally taking infrastructure money from Measure M and building a eight hundred thousand dollar fence, for, to keep who out? You're worried about the one kid who fell in the wash? We have other ways to protect those children, obviously, that's a tragedy, but I don't think that this is really a befitting of a culture that's as civilized as we are to be locking up the area so that, what, you're going to capture the water?
Thank you, Mr. Previn, for the record, that child that died is somebody's son. Thank you, Mr. Spindler, come on, come on up. Thank you very much, thank you very much, go ahead.
So, again, I'm sorry I have to support this item, because mommy Monica, my second mommy, and Nuri will always be my little mommy, and of course, she's putting the fences up to keep the pimps, the prostitutes, and the junkies out of the seventh district. This is a deal we secretly brokered in December with the late Greg Smith, before he passed away, and that little cocksucker, John Lee, took over, but now we are taking back the Northwest Valley, bordering Katherine Barger's district, together the team of Monica, the team of Katherine, the team of Nuri, we'll get all of you the fuck out and stay out, go down to the first district and go down and take crack with Gil Sadeo, thank you, God bless you.
Okay, next speaker, Candido, item number ten.
Thank you, Ms., um, Madam President, you know, fencing, I just don't believe in fencing, I would rather use that money in different services, it was brought to my attention that there's other issues, other, uh, services that we could give these people, um, and I just want to make it very clear, I'm not bought and sold by anybody in this council, I'll take on anybody, and I've done it in the past. My thing, though, is when I hear rude things about individuals, especially in the twelfth district, you know what we do in the twelfth district for our homeless? We try everything in our powers to get them back on their feet, we do everything in our powers to make them part of our community, uh, so those of you who say that in the twelfth district, we don't care, and that our leaders don't care, please come up and we'll show you, rather than talking out of your mouth on both ends of your, uh, come and see us, let's talk about, I'll buy you lunch, and you can see what really can take place when people work together, not against each other, I'll fight you one day and I'll fight them the next day, because you know what? When you're wrong, you're wrong, and when I'm wrong, I'll admit I'm wrong.
Thank you, Candido, looks like that concludes speakers on item number ten. Let's go ahead and prepare to vote on, on item number ten as amended, let's open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
All right, so Madam Clerk, what's before us now?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Okay, posting and referred, members, are there any announcements? See none, and we can all rise for adjourned motions. Are there any adjourned motions to my left? Any adjourned motions to my right? We see none, have a great afternoon, our meeting is adjourned. Seeing none, have a great afternoon, our meeting is adjourned.